Thank you again, applicants and all those that are here, our commissioners also for your time, and legal and staff. So for each case, there will be a public hearing. We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve 2 minutes as a rebuttal. We ask that the public keep their comments to 2 minutes unless they have previously requested in writing for 5 minutes as a representative of a group or organization. Pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County. This a statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. Looking at our agenda, our first in order is adoption of some minutes, and let me just give a little bit of explanation. The June 9 minutes are posted. I think also the June 15 got posted late, so I don't think our commission has had an opportunity to review it. So we're going to defer that till the next meeting. Is that good with you all? Okay. And who's taking lead today? Melissa, are you ready to?
Sean.
We have need to make a motion to accept the June 9 one. Are we deferring that as well?
I move to accept June 9 minutes.
Okay, there's a motion and there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? I see that passing. Thank you for the June 9, 2022 minutes.
All right. The next item is request to rehear. So this is a rehearing request for a painted sign that was approved with conditions by the commission at the June 15 meeting on the consent agenda. The applicant protests one of the conditions of approval, specifically condition number two, which required the removal of an existing nonhistoric painted sign on the upper level on the First Avenue facade, just above the location of the proposed new painted sign. The applicant has requested a rehearing for several reasons. Those include the cost associated with removal. Also, they indicated that they did not have approval from their board at the time to remove the sign. So there were representatives at the meeting, but they did not have that information at the time. So for rehearing request, the rule is to not rehear a case unless there is information that could have not been available at the time of the previous meeting. And also, if the commission does decide to rehear this request, then it would need to be heard at the August 17 meeting since the notice requirements were not met in time for it to be heard at this meeting.
Time here if you have questions.
Sure. Unless you have other questions, you can make a motion.
I move to rehear.
Okay. Any other discussions by the other commissioners?
I'd like to make it just a question for legal and maybe the...
There a second?
Oh, you discuss before the second.
Sure. So we've got a motion to defer. We have a second to defer. Okay, we have a second to defer.
Motion, motion to rehear.
Yeah. To rehear, I'm sorry. To rehear, yes. There's a first, there's a second, all in favor of the motion.
Do we do discussion before we vote?
Right, we're going to discuss after the motion.
I can't vote.
Motion, second, discussion.
Yes. So we have a first, we have a second.
Now discussion.
Now, okay, there we go.
Sorry. Well, I was just reviewing this case again, and I was, I went down there today to look at the mural, and it's in a mighty big building, you know, I love Acme. But my question is, would we allow something that was like on the side of that building across from the Ryman that shows the bus protest Congressman Lewis? They've got a mural up there, but it's not painted on the side of the building. It looks like it is, but it's kind of like a plastic affixed thing, and you know, they can take it down and put it back up. I think there was one other that we approved that way on Broadway, and I was just wondering if now would be, would they have to get approval to do that? Or could they just do that? Do they need to rehear it again? To, in order, if this is a, just a suggestion for the people, for the people who are submitting this? And I just...
I think you'd need a, I think it would still come before you as an appurtenance to the building, but I don't know whether your design guidelines would be more favorable to it.
I think we'd have to really have discussion, so...
So I just thought I'd throw that out, and in case it had any effect on today's motion to rehear.
We can still vote on that, so...
But they would have to bring it, not us. Okay.
Well, because it's a rehear, it's not a deferral.
Right.
Commissioner?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a clarifying question because rehearing, we have to have new evidence which were not available at the previous meeting. So could you, somebody identify what's the new evidence, you know, difference from the application in previous month compared to application they are trying, asking for us to consider rehearing? As far as I'm concerned, I'm having a hard time identifying what would be that new evidence might be.
And I don't think I got an answer to my question. If there was a new proposal, if we turn this down today, could they bring it back to us with the new proposal for the new sign?
It's all on, Laura.
If they wanted to do that.
We're all on.
I see. I think that a new proposal can always come back to you.
Okay.
If it's different than what you had.
That would be new information, but if they would give it to us.
And also just for, and also for the record, we don't, they did not get their correct affidavit to hear this, so that's still pending as well.
Okay.
So either way, we would not, we would decide whether we wanted to hear it, but in either case. So Laura, we're good? We got a first, we got a motion, first and second. We should now vote to rehear, unless you have other discussion. Did you get that answer?
Yes. So rehear would be next month.
Next month.
Not today.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
And so, but as of right now...
Okay.
The application front of us do not contain a new evidence, as far as I'm concerned. So I think proper motion at this time will be motion to defer instead of rehear. And then next month, if applicant has new information as well as affidavit requirement is met, we could hear next month.
Laura, legal, please.
I think you have to have a decision on the motion that's before you, before you can make a new motion.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. So are you good, Commissioner, to make them ready to vote?
We can do the motion next.
Vote it down.
Yeah, exactly. All right. So let me summarize what we're looking at, is that there's a motion to, as per the agenda, is to, the applicant has requested to rehear their application. We don't know if they're going to bring in new information. That's a rehear. So if we're going to hear it again, that'll be for next month. So that's, there's a motion, there's a second. Who seconded on that? Dr. Williams. And now we will take that vote. Everybody good? Ready, clear? All right. So let's take a vote. Yea? All in approval?
What, that we will rehear it today?
Yes. No, next month.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Commissioner? Okay.
Yes.
So 1, 2, 3 are saying to rehear, and nay? Two nays. So we have to have 4? What is the, we have to have 4 votes, correct? So I would need to make that vote. So there's 3 yes and 2 no's. I'm going to vote for yes, for a rehear. Okay? Good.
Great.
All right. So applicant, we will see you next month. Please work with the staff. Thank you. All right, onward. Adoption of the agenda.
Okay, Commissioners, you've received the draft agenda and somewhat nearly final draft agenda, and there are a couple further revisions or requests for revisions to the agenda, which I will describe now. The following items have requested or are being requested to be removed from the agenda. Those are 1510 Villa Place, that applicant has revised to meet administrative approval. 212 Leonard Avenue, the notification requirements were not met. Those 2 items were on the consent agenda. Also, 908 Meriden Street, request to defer from the applicant. 1501 Boscoble Street, applicant request to defer. 1510 Boscoble Street, applicant request to defer. Also, 107 Mockingbird, that was notification requirements not met. 1700, I can say the item numbers too if you need. Item 32, 1700 Fourth Avenue North, notification requirements not met. Item 34, 411 Broadway, applicant's request to defer. And 36, 2405 10th Avenue South, an applicant request to defer. As far as I know, there are no other requested changes to the agenda.
Sean, I have a question on number 27.
Yes. 107 Mockingbird Road? Yes.
Is, any changes to that? Since there was no affidavit received?
Yes. Yeah, that was item 27, 107 Mockingbird Road, notification requirements not met.
Okay, gotcha. Sorry if I didn't hear that clearly. Is there anyone in the public that wants to remove anything on the agenda? Seeing none? Okay.
I will also add that items 15, which is on the consent agenda, 15 is 24, sorry, 4205 Aberdeen Road, and 17, which is 926 Bradford Avenue. We did receive public comment on those, but they were either outside of our purview or not in opposition. So those 2 items on consent are still on consent, and they were not requested to be removed or opposed. Just wanted to make sure that was known to the commission.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. Okay, so we have one that will not vote.
Madam Chair, move to approve the amended agenda and the public comments by staff.
Okay, thank you. There's a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that was for concurring votes, so that's good. Yes, because Caitlin was not here, so, yeah. Did our scribe get that? Okay, thank you. All right. Are there any council members here? Okay, seeing none? Go through the consent.
I will continue with the consent agenda, and before getting into it, I just want to mention that as a notice to the public, the items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or a member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. If that happens, we will read the case one by one, and if you're in opposition to the, sorry, back up. I will read the address and type of application for each case, and if you're in opposition to any of those items, please raise your hand or call out, and when, we will return to that case item at the end of the agenda.
Sean, I'll watch for you.
Okay, thank you. So I will read the items, the list of items on the consent agenda, and as I said, anybody who wants to debate an item, please speak up. The items on consent are 308 Scott Avenue, and that's an application for new construction of an outbuilding. 1309 Edgewood Place, that is application for construction of an outbuilding. 1424 Ordway Place, and that is an application for construction of an outbuilding. 1511 Douglas Avenue, new construction and addition. 2341 Riverside Drive, new construction of an outbuilding. 1510 Place removed from consent agenda. 1108 Montrose Avenue, new construction of an addition. Okay. 1108 Montrose.
Which one was that? 1108 Montrose? So if we pull that off of consent, that will be heard at the last of the meeting?
I mean, public comment would have to come at the end after it's presented.
Right. Not at the end of your presentation?
Correct.
And not the meeting? Yes, at the end of the meeting?
Correct, yeah. The item would be presented, there would be public comment open after that before the commission moves to discuss.
Okay.
So we'll move that one aside to the end. Continuing, 1511 16th Avenue South, and that is for new construction of infill, revision to a previously approved plan. 2104 Natchez Trace, application for new construction and addition. 212 Broadway, and that is signage on a historic building. 4205 Aberdeen Road, new construction addition. 22 Leonard is off the consent agenda. And finally, 926 Bradford Avenue, new construction outbuilding. Again, if anybody has, last call, if anybody has any objection or needs to hear a case presented, please speak up.
I want to make sure with legal, so this would still be open for public comment? It's not to be debated on as a consent agenda? They raised their hand. Which number are you, 1108 Montrose?
Are they asking it to be taken off consent?
Yes. The question is, are you, are you asking us to take it off of consent, or are you wanting to make public comment?
I think it would have to be taken off consent.
Yes, we would have to be taken off consent and would be heard on, at the end of our meeting. Are you good with that? Okay, so thank you for hanging in here with us then. Okay? So with that, there's, we will pull that to the end of the agenda.
Yes. With 1108 Montrose and the other 2 items that I mentioned at the beginning, the remainder of the consent agenda items, staff recommends approval of these items with the applicable conditions, finding that the applications meet the design guidelines of their respective overlays.
Okay. Any questions to staff? Motion?
I move to approve consent agenda.
Okay.
There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, the published agenda was the historic tax abatement applications. I understand that that will be deferred.
Tim would like to present that. Thank you, Sean. Would you like to comment?
Yes.
Director Tim?
Walker. Thank you. We are asking for the tax abatement proposal before you, the 3 properties to be deferred at least one meeting. And the reason for that is both the administration and the council member who actually sponsored the original legislation, Bill 2019-3, has, will be filing a bill tomorrow that will increase the amount of abatement that you will have, that he is looking to increase it from 10 to 20 million and to pull out a separate set of abatement tool for any disaster-related properties. They had their own special fund. And so with that, that bill should be filed tomorrow and go to council, and we're asking for deferral until that time.
Any questions to Tim? Okay. We need to, we don't need to vote on a deferral.
I would assume so, yes.
I would. I move to accept the deferral request.
A motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you, Tim. Look forward to hearing more about that.
The preliminary SP review case was deferred, so the next case for discussion is a violation case, and staff member Kelly Mitchell will present.
The only violation today is 1204 Russell Street. As you all know, this was a contributing building in Lachlan Springs Historic District. So the project has been heard by the commission multiple times due to extensive demolition of the historic home, as well as outbuildings and addition being constructed without permits. The reconstruction has been completed, and the permit has been closed out by staff. The addition, the outbuildings have both been completed, but the permits themselves have not been closed out quite yet. So the current violation is a rear covered porch. It currently sits about 10 feet from the existing outbuilding that was approved by staff, and that is the primary issue right now. Typically, under guidelines, they require at least 20 feet between additions, infill, and outbuildings. Again, as I said, the porch is currently 10 feet. Staff, excuse me, the commission has allowed for less than 20 feet, but it's only allowed when law is unusually shaped, is unusually short, or there are easements in place that will prevent the outbuilding or the other elements to be moved. This is not the case for this project. Staff had also required the applicant to adjust or move part of the foundation for the outbuilding to accommodate for that 20-foot separation. There's also some questions about the materials on the sidewalls that were used on the porch. Currently, they may have presaturated wood, that's of course not common material for walls. Staff's also requesting that the porch be inset a foot on either side, which is typical for rear additions. Of course, this does not follow that. So staff recommends that the rear porch addition be fully removed, or that the walls, roof, and post are removed within 60 days of the commission's decision, finding that it does not meet section 4 for materials, section 6B1 for location, and section 6C2 for sitting. I'm not sure if the applicant's here or not.
We'll ask. Is the applicant here? Okay.
I have a question for staff real quick.
Sure.
There's a, I guess there's a possibility that 20 feet, maybe not, but that 20 feet can sort of be measured in part of the yard and not another part in terms of relationships of the buildings on the site plan.
Yes, it's possible, but we didn't, staff didn't.
And it's, yeah, it's not your, not your job to design, design the project for the applicant, and I know...
Yes, the similar project, we pulled straight back, whereas if it was...
From the corner, not, not sort of a diagonal measure.
It's straight back to the wall.
Okay, yeah. So the assumption being there that 20 feet applies as if the garage filled the whole lot or was as wide as the house, 20 feet applies across the entire back of the house.
Yes, sir.
So in the staff's analysis, no porch, other than maybe a covering over the back door, would be appropriate on the rear of the house.
If it's covered. If they uncover, we would not review it.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Okay, open public hearing? Oh, if the applicant's not here, right, we'll open public hearing? Close public hearing? Discussions?
I'm in agreement with staff on this one. We've seen this case several times for several various different reasons throughout the stages of construction, so if, I'll wait till anyone else has any comments. I seem to be...
In the past, I've advocated for additional time, but I think because of just the nature of construction availability of labor, but my recollection in this applicant is a lot of this work is self-performed, and I'm not inclined to extend that.
Okay. Other comments, please?
So with that regarding 1204 Russell Street, I move to follow all staff recommendations that the rear porch addition be fully removed, or that the walls, roof, and posts are removed within 60 days of today, the commission's decision.
Okay. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed, and that motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. First up is 200 Broadway. In September 2021, the commission approved a proposed rooftop addition and alterations to the historic structure at 200 Broadway. Revisions were approved in April 2022. There is also a separate signage proposal on the agenda today. As interior demolition work has progressed, concerns have arisen about the condition of the secondary north and west exterior walls. This is an application for the demolition and reconstruction of the full west-facing wall along the alley and the upper portion of the north-facing wall, where it protrudes above the roof level of the structure next door. Both walls will be reconstructed, reusing the original brick wherever possible. As indicated in the submitted engineer's report, the north and west walls are unreinforced brick masonry with deteriorated and missing mortar. In places, brick can be removed by hand. Due to the proximity of the adjacent building to the north, no shoring tower can be constructed on this side of the building. Rather, this wall will need to be braced to a shoring tower along the south side at Broadway. The horizontal bracing members could easily be knocked by construction equipment required to pour the new floors. Should this happen, the structural integrity of the walls could fail and collapse is possible. As such, the applicant is asking to dismantle the walls by hand and then reconstruct them, reusing the original brick wherever possible. Staff finds that while demolition of entire original walls is never a first option, it could be appropriate in this instance as the walls at issue are secondary elevations with no character-defining features, and as they are proposed to be reconstructed with the original brick. When the project is complete, these walls should be indistinguishable from their current appearance. Staff recommends approval of the proposed demolition and reconstruction with the conditions that replacement brick, if needed, shall be approved prior to purchase and installation. During reconstruction, the bricks shall be laid, jointed, tooled, and mortared in the same way as the historic walls. And mortar shall be approved prior to purchase and installation, and shall match the original mortar's width, depth, color, raking profile, composition, and texture. With these conditions, staff finds the project meets the design guidelines for Section 2 for rehabilitation and Section 5 for demolition. I know the applicant's here and would like to speak, but do you have questions for me first? Yes.
Given the detail of the conditions, if a significant portion of the masonry were unfit for reconstruction, this load-bearing masonry, and I think they're coming, that is a proposal, structural proposal, is not to change the system to support the floors, but that the exterior walls would remain multi, many widths of load-bearing masonry. Is it, do you, is that kind of the understanding of staff? Is they're not proposing an alternate structural system that...
The interior structural system is going to be altered significantly, is my understanding.
So the floors would then not be supported by the exterior wall?
Correct, correct.
Here's, let me get the question.
Yes.
I think the application has a caveat where possible, and you know, if the bricks turn to dust, it could be a rather significant difference between the 2, and I think just having staff approve some test or some indication of what that would look like, because you've got a building that's historic up to, you know, if you're doing portions of the wall, maybe can't be avoided, but that could look... maybe can't be avoided, but that could look entirely different as a, as a facade, facade visible from the Broadway.
Yes. And so this, this piece of the wall, where you can see the sign there, that's the north elevation, so it's going to be just that portion that extends above the neighboring building, and then this full alley-facing elevation there.
So you wouldn't have this sort of mismatch of different.
Right. It's going to be a full wall on both sides. And my understanding, and the applicant is here, and they can probably clarify, but my understanding is that the brick is, I believe it's three bricks deep, so they're hoping between that full width to have enough bricks to at least put a veneer of original bricks on the exterior. But we did want to include that condition. If, as you say, all the brick turns to dust, we do want to approve the brick that, that they do ultimately use.
Thanks for clarifying.
Okay.
Applicant?
And then I do have some handouts, if I may approach.
Also, if you would give us your name and who you're with, please.
Absolutely. My name is Daniel Tansey. I'm with STG Design, located at 211 Union Street, Suite 103, Nashville, Tennessee.
Thank you.
I'm Lillard Teasley with Teasley Services Group, located at 4711 Trialsdale, Suite 215, Nashville, 37220.
Thank you, sir.
So as you can see, per the exhibit that was presented, you know, we are requesting the removal and reconstruction of the north and west walls of the 200 Broadway building. After selective demolition was performed on the interior, removing most plaster in different areas that exposed the original brick, there are some significant concerns from both the structural engineer, the masonry engineer, as well as the project team and general contractor. So after we sat down and reviewed all possible scenarios of how to keep those walls and also provide the shoring, thank you, we decided that the best way to move forward in order to protect the building, both Broadway and Second Avenue, as well as public safety, we decided that we were going to propose removing the north and west walls. Again, to reiterate, the shoring for the north wall does have to extend all the way through from the south facade, which creates a lot of constructability concerns as well as, you know, protection of the surrounding buildings and the pedestrians. So at, at this point, we did propose, to answer your question, we did propose to reuse the brick. We are selectively, are by hand demolishing those two walls. We will shore the Broadway facade and the, and the Second Avenue facade to keep those stable during this process. And we do have, if there are concerns of brick, you know, being deteriorated or not being able to be reused, there are multiple opportunities to reuse the partition walls that are also multi-width brick that are separating different bays of this building as structural support. So it is our understanding that in the event that some of that brick can't be reused, we do have a significant amount of brick that we can, and will work with staff for their approval on that. So after working through all these possible solutions, the team engaged Lillard in his experience with the building. He has prior knowledge of the building, and so I wanted to hand this over to Lillard to provide some insight on that.
So my involvement, it was as the structural engineer of record for the previous two iterations of the project. I became involved with this team about three months ago, when I was brought to the team by the subcontractors and the general contractors to support the structural engineer of record. My experience with the building is really different than everybody else's because I have been in the previous projects, and those projects were designed build, so I was also faced with all of the shoring concerns, all of the masonry issues, all of the site constraints. At this point, based on the fact that it, the staff recommendations are to approve, I would say the only, you know, unless you've got questions for us, I think we're good. As it relates to the amount of brick, those are four-width walls. The reconstruction will be effectively two-width. We should have twice as many bricks as we need. We've got interior pilasters that are no longer part of it, they're four-width as well. There's two locations where those exist. We should have an abundance of brick to be reused wherever anybody wants to use it. If you've got specific questions, I'd love to address them.
We may. Thank you. You might. I think you still have a few minutes if there's any rebuttals in the public comment. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Commissioners?
Tim, I've got a question. You know, the building I live in is, was built in the mid-1800s, and when they first came to that building, Ron said that they pushed the wall, and the wall moved, and there were trees growing out of the bricks. And he got a historic tuck pointer in to strengthen the bricks. Now, this is for residential use, which is probably different, but I was wondering why in the case of where I live, that could be done, and why in this building, that can't be done.
Well, I'll try to answer that. I know your building is a shorter building. It's only three stories versus this five-story building. And although this building may not be quite as old as your building, because your building is 19th century, too, I, I think every building is different, and staff does support this recommendation to repair it. You know, it may just be this brick wasn't fired as well as the brick in your building. I wish I could speak more to that, but we feel like it really is warranted in this case.
Okay. Thank you.
I do appreciate the effort to saving, you know, historical brick, and I am, feel much more comfortable after hearing abundance of brick after handpicked and shored and stored. Of course, you know, even partial demolition, and especially outer wall, is not ideal, but I think we are in a great hands in this project. So I am totally in support of staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'm, I'm compelled by the applicant's, structural engineer and the architect's presentation and the lengths it's, that they've gone to in the staff's analysis. So with that said, unless there's any further comment, I move approval of 200 Broadway as presented with the staff's recommendations.
Motion?
Aye.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I see none opposed, and that motion passes. Thank you, applicant. You're up next again, anyway.
All right. The next request, it's also for 200 Broadway. It's a request to construct a marquee structure and to install a projecting sign on the building at 200 Broadway. The commission disapproved a different version of this request at the March meeting. With this revision, the scale of the proposed marquee structure has been reduced. Also of note, the zoning administrator has preliminarily approved the business as a tourist-oriented business, which will come up in, in the presentation. The design guidelines do not prohibit the addition of marquees, which are a type of canopy. As proposed, the marquee attaches above the first-floor windows and just below the second-story windows, and will not cover the decorative plaster capitals. The marquee will be four feet deep. Staff finds that a marquee on this building could be appropriate, given that it's the tallest building in the district, among the widest, and has potential for changeable copy due to its tourist-oriented business qualifications. Staff recommends acknowledging that the building and the business are unique conditions in the Broadway district, and that if approved, the decision does not set a precedent for buildings that are less than four stories, less than 80 feet in width, and that have businesses that do not meet the qualifications for tourist-oriented businesses. The marquee addition includes bare bulbs on the underside of the, the marquee structure, which are a typical feature of historic marquees. Staff recommends that the bulbs all be a matching warm white color and not flash or chase. And I believe that applicant has indicated that this aligns with their design intent. There are no guidelines specific to marquee signage, so staff refer to the guidelines for canopy signage, since a marquee is a type of canopy. Under these criteria, the signage associated with marquee, including the changeable copy that is only allowed for tourist-oriented businesses, exceeds the allotment. However, staff finds that the marquee signage can be appropriate as proposed, since it is associated with a marquee which is unique, a unique structure for the district. Further, staff recommends that the bare bulbs on the signage be removed, since they are specifically prohibited by the design guidelines for signs, and that the marquee sign not include chasing or flashing lights, since those have only been allowed on projecting signs. The proposed, and that was an up-close look at the sign on the marquee. The proposed projecting sign meets the guidelines for allotment, but not for height, projection, and illumination. The design guidelines caps the sign height at 20 feet for buildings that are four or more stories, and limits projection to six feet from the wall. As proposed, the projecting sign is 25 feet tall and projects approximately seven feet from the wall. The existing sign at that location is thought to be approximately 26 feet tall. Staff suggests that the dimensions of the projecting sign could meet the design guidelines for exceptional design because of the existing signage conditions, the unique location of the building as a gateway to Second Avenue, the large scale of the building, the fact that the building has lost a portion of its width due to the widening of Second Avenue. The projecting sign otherwise meets the allotment for the side of the building, and because it's, and also because it's paired with the tourist-oriented signage, which allows for the, the changeable copy and, and for additional allotment. The projecting sign incorporates bare bulbs on the letters. Bare bulb illumination is specifically prohibited by the design guidelines for signs, so staff would recommend that these be removed. In the past, the commission has approved a push-through acrylic lights that do resemble bare bulbs, so that would, that could be an alternative in this case. The rope border and the accent lines going up to the, the blue arrows are indicated on the plans that they chase, flash, and fade. To meet the design guidelines, staff recommends that only one element on the sign include flashing or chasing, include flashing or chasing lights. So in conclusion, staff recommends, recommends approval of the proposal with the conditions that, one, there be no bare bulbs on any signage, two, the marquee has no chasing light features, three, the projecting sign only have one chasing light feature, and four, the bare bulbs on the underside of the marquee structure be a warm white color and not include flashing or chasing lights. So given the unique, unique conditions of the building, its location, and its tourist-oriented business designation, staff finds that the project can meet the design guidelines for new construction and signage with the conditions recommended. So staff would recommend, recommend approval with all conditions or, or disapproval if not all conditions are included.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thanks, Melissa. I have a question real quick. For chasing and flashing features, don't we usually have a caveat that it's, you know, three seconds per light?
Yes.
Okay, just as a note.
And I believe that's, that's noted on their plans. It's just they were proposing more than the design guidelines.
Okay, but if they do, but that is usually, it's a three-second minimum generally, if, if someone wanted to make sure that was.
Yes.
Included on the record. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions to Melissa for the moment? Okay, we'll hold on that. Applicant?
Commissioners, it's good to see everyone again. My name is Pablo David, 429 Chestnut Street. Since the last time we were here, we've been working alongside historic staff, and equally as important, we took a lot of the comments that you all made to us back in March into consideration and really tried to reduce the sign, make it more appropriate as you all had suggested. So to that end, just a few stats. We've reduced the structure size by 16%. We've reduced the reader board by 26%, and the projection by 55 and a half percent. And that reduction in the projection also has the added benefit of really displaying the historic features on Broadway a little more clearly. And again, just as a reminder, we are a 500-seat music venue, a little bit different, and that's why we've been preliminarily approved for the tourist-oriented business. And other than that, I mean, we've, we think we've done a good job, and thank you, staff, and thank you all for your comments, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Okay, discussion?
My first impression was I was delighted to see that projecting sign reduced so much. I was a little worried about whether those bricks were going to hold that big sign, and so I was happy to see you make that change.
I'll, I'll add, I, I don't take issue with any of the staff's, I know that, I was not here for the first round or presentation of this one, but certainly seems that the applicant and the staff have taken great care to have this meet the guidelines, and it certainly appears in my mind that it is. One thing I want to speak to is that the applicant mentioned that they're 500 fixed-seat user, and that is one of the conditions that qualifies them. I think certainly that would be, there are not that many opportunities along Broadway and in the entertainment district where a venue would have that, and this is special for this building, and it's special for that use. And so having this appear, when we were putting the signage guidelines together, and there was quite a few interests that, that brought all that together, having enough room for something like this to be special and unique, and everything else not try to compete with it so that it, everybody was, was clamoring to say, look at me, I think in, in the overall analysis, this, this sort of fits the bill for, for what its use is. Certainly, if a venue did not have 500 fixed seats, it would no longer apply for, to have this amenity or have a projecting marquee.
Really noted?
Yes, ma'am.
So this, first of all, I would like to thank the applicant, as well as staff, and working together to come with this solution. I mean, compared to, you know, this sign has been evolving since January, and by the time we hear March, and then now, definitely evolved, and I do appreciate the effort. So to me, just trying to compare with our downtown design guideline, and it says canopies, including marquees, may be appropriate if such a design is architecturally compatible with the overall storefront design in terms of size, location, color, and material, and does not detract from character of the building. And I think it, because of the size, was dramatically shrunk, and compared to March, the projection on two sidewalks is literally less than half. So that is a great plus to me. So I am now seeing this design meeting with our design sign canopy, design guideline, and so assuming all this staff condition will be followed, such as chasing and flashing feature is minimized and not as proposed. If the applicant agree on all condition, I am opening up to leaning towards staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think when we first discussed it in, in March, and also it does state on those minutes, that we really did deliberate that as, you know, in general as our commission. Just as public comment that, you know, Broadway, Second Avenue, and on downtown is an evolving character. And so the way. And so the way public would like to hear you, hear us say that is because we do seriously think through that, not just for today, but also for future. And so again, when we deliberate like that, we, you know, thank you for your patience, but we also are in that process of learning how to live with what we have reality now for the downtown. So with that said.
Madam Chair, with respect to the signage application for 200 Broadway, and upon confirmation of and continued operation as a tourist-oriented business, I move approval of the application with all of the staff's conditions.
Duly noted on that motion?
Second.
There's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? So I see that motion passes. Thank you very much, and thank you, applicant.
All right. The next case is 1013 Montrose Avenue. 1013 Montrose Avenue is a circa 1930 side gable bungalow on a corner lot that contributes to the historic character of the Waverly Belmont Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. In May 2022, the applicant submitted an addition and outbuilding for commission review, and the commission reviewed the proposal at the May 2022 public hearing. The commission denied the addition and approved the outbuilding with conditions. The applicant has since redesigned the addition and has submitted it for review. The application today is to construct a new rear addition that is taller than the historic house. The addition meets all base zoning setbacks. The proposed addition extends taller than the historic house with a ridge raise, but does not extend wider than the historic house. Because the historic building is one and one-half stories and has a side gable roof form without clipped gables, staff finds that a ridge raise may be appropriate on this house if the addition were to have appropriate overall massing and scale. Staff finds that the addition does not meet sections 6B2 through 11 for scale, because the addition has a full two-story form behind a one and one-half story house. The height of the addition's eaves is taller than the height of the eaves of the historic house, and the addition's footprint more than doubles the footprint of the historic building. Although with this revised design, the applicant attempted to break up the perceived massing of the second story of the addition by undulating the eve heights, staff finds that the overall massing still reads as a full two-story form and increases the eve heights rather than lowering the eve heights. Staff finds a rear addition with a max of one and one-half stories and footprint that does not more than double that of the historic house to be appropriate for this house. With the exception of three windows on the left elevation and one window on the right elevation, the windows on the proposed addition are all generally twice as tall as they are wide, thereby meeting the historic proportions of openings. Staff recommends that all windows on the proposed addition be twice as tall as they are wide. Staff recommends disapproval of the proposed addition, finding that the proposal does not meet section 6B2 through 11 for scale, 6A1 for compatibility, nor 6D for proportion and rhythm of openings of Part 1 of the design guidelines for turn of the 20th century districts. I know the applicant is here as well, but I can take questions if you have any before I sit down.
Thank you, Joseph.
Thanks.
Any questions? Okay, not for now. Applicant? Please give us your name and address.
Hi, sorry, I'm very new to this. I am--
Praise. Take it easy.
Have no clue what's going on, to be honest.
Well, you're the applicant, so we're going to hear you.
Right, well, I meant like, I've never presented to a committee like this, and I am brand-new to building, so I'm still kind of in the dark, but I'm figuring it out. The reason that we built this house--
Can you give us your name and address first?
I'm Sidus Lottie, 1712 McKenney Avenue. The reason that we designed the building the way we did is because I'm an agent, she's a builder, and we try to keep our -- we want it to be a historical house, obviously. We want it to be pretty. We don't want it to be a house that's not functional because of the fact that whenever we have to do cut-ins, you lose, you know, your 4,000-square-foot house, all of a sudden feels like 3,200. And I experience this every single time I try to sell a house that is historic, and I run into these same issues. I know that Paris Avenue, what was it, 1911?
1011, I think.
1011 Paris was basically exactly this same house with the same floor plan we drew and was approved this year.
Last year.
Last year, excuse me. And while we are more than happy to work with you guys, I think what we're trying to understand is like, how do we marry the guidelines of historic while also creating a functional house for the end-user that they're able to put beds and bedrooms, and it's functional? So while, obviously, our roof rates needs to come down, what, I guess we're trying to figure out where we can make it work for you guys and for the end-user.
Okay.
Well, and then if we could--
And please give your name and address as well.
I'm sorry, I'm Lauren Perkins, 300 Lealeland Lane.
Okay, Laura, great.
We are also, the footprint is only doubling by like, how much is it more than doubling? Like 13 feet or something. So we didn't know if we could start by approving at least the footprint. I didn't know if we had to change everything, or if we could approve the footprint, if we changed the roof lines and lower those as well. That's the only other question.
Okay. You may hold off more comments. I don't know how many more. You have three minutes if there's any rebuttal to by public. So we may ask you more questions. So if you want to sit down or hang there for a minute?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Other than if somebody wants to open, I'm opening public hearing. Anyone to speak on this? I will close public hearing. Okay, Commissioners, discussion?
You know, I'd like, I guess, just for Commissioners, you know, I'm in agreement with staff's analysis on this one. And then, you know, for the applicants, as they are new to this, you know, a lot of times when you have smaller historic homes, you just have to have smaller additions. And that's just how, you know, and we can only, to the second question, we can only approve or deny or give comments to what we see today, what we've applied. So, you know, designing on the whim, you know, during these commission meetings isn't something that we do of, you know, hey, well, if you do this, we'll approve it here today. If we don't see that on a plan that's come through our for approval, we can't review anything that's not on a document that we see that has been, come to us for approval or disapproval. So that's, those are just my comments. And, you know, we just generally, I think, follow, you know, the, if it's a smaller one-and-a-half-story house, it has to be, you know, a smaller addition. And, you know, you might not get four bedrooms and master suites and everything. It's just how it is. So that's, those are my thoughts on it, and I'm in full agreement with staff's analysis on this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I am agreed, met with Commissioner Jones, you know, because our job is not design the addition for the applicant. Rather, our job is to take a look at the plan and then determine if it's meet with the guideline or not. So in this case, I think staff analysis is right on. It is, massing is still too big. And so it's the thing about having or living in historic zoning district, sometimes you cannot get 100% you want. So sometimes you have to redesign. So I think what I would like to encourage to the applicant is work with the staff and then try to meet design guideline. So sometimes you may have to adjust height or massing, whatever the case might be. So I am in support of staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner. And again, I think another general comment is that our purview is how it's compatible with the historic context. So when we see a project that is larger than the design guidelines and also the mass and scaling overwhelms the historic structure, then we are cautioned to approve anything larger. So that's really a general comment.
Can I ask one question? Just whenever you guys approve one, like identical, like this is exactly the floor plan that was approved for another house that was one and a half, like it would just happen. So I guess our biggest confusion is like, why was that house approved when it's exactly the same as what we have and the same plan as what we're proposing, but then ours isn't?
I'd say the floor plan is not, other than, I think there's a general comment that it's a little too large in terms of the new versus the old. But it seems like you're skating that line, and it might not be that hard to make that--
He's talking about the roof lines are exactly the same, which is why--
Yeah, well, so if the plan was the same, the elevations, I don't have that application in front of us, and certainly we'd take that into account. But I think on a one-and-a-half-story house, I don't have, I really don't have anything more to say than the staff's analysis.
No, I mean, I'm just asking, because obviously you want to compare to something, like we are going off of something that was built and approved, and then for it not to be approved, it's just, obviously, as somebody who's not done it, it's just confusing.
You know, it's very difficult for us to make a comment on that without seeing what you're seeing.
Totally, yeah.
I sent it to Joseph, and he looked at, they're literally identical, and I sent him another one that was approved a couple of years ago, and I changed this one to look exactly like that one. It was also approved. So if we put those next to each other, would that help our case more?
Was the site plan the same?
Yes, like the houses look identical from the front.
We, you know, again, I want to be with the Commissioners, is that if we don't see it, and if you quote it, you know, that's not our purview today.
I mean, again, that's sadly the nature of commissions. I mean, it could have been different people were here that day. It could have been, it really, it just totally depends on--
Yeah, I just didn't know if it would help our case at all to say like--
I don't think so.
Well, if we saw it.
But we don't do that. We've never done that.
All right. Well, you know, we recommend you continue to work with staff. We're always amicable to re-see it, you know, or they're going to work with you. It'll work out.
Thank you.
Okay, any other, we have, we're still in discussion, so Commissioners, anything else? Or is there a motion? Any more other comments?
Regarding 1013 Montrose Avenue, I move for disapproval of the project with staff's findings and analysis.
Is there a motion?
Second.
There's a second? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Please continue to work with the staff. Thank you so much.
The next case is 1008 C Villa Place. The house at 1008 C Villa Place was a non-contributing house in the Edge Hill Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. An administrative permit for demolition of the non-contributing house was issued in April of 2022. Today, the applicant requests new infill for the vacant lot at 1008 C Villa Place. The applicant proposes to construct a two-and-one-half-story infill on the vacant lot at 1008 C Villa. A future outbuilding is indicated on the site plan and elevations, but there is not enough information to review the outbuilding at this time. The proposed infill, though, meets all base zoning setbacks. Most of the nearby contributing homes are one-to-one-and-one-half-story houses. There is a two-and-one-half-story contributing house across the street from 1008 C Villa Place. The top image in this slide shows the former house at 1008 C Villa Place in the middle, surrounded by two non-contributing houses on either side. The second image on the slide shows houses across the street from 1008 C Villa. It's contributing houses on both ends and two non-contributing houses in the middle. You can see that two-and-one-half-story contributing house there on the far end. And then the bottom image shows more context across the street. There's a contributing two-and-a-half-story, that same house there on the far left, and non-contributing in the middle, and then a contributing one-and-one-half-story on the right. The proposal is a two-and-one-half-story infill, which staff finds to be appropriate for the historic context. Staff also finds the proposed height to be appropriate for the historic context. The proposed width of the infill is 37 feet 6 inches, which staff finds to be too wide for a two-and-one-half-story house in this context. Based on the contributing context, staff finds that a house with a two-to-two-and-one-half-story form should have a max width of 34 feet. With the conditions shown on the following slide, staff finds that the proposed infill meets all guidelines for materials, form, roof form, dormers, orientation, setbacks, parking and vehicular storage, utilities, and proportion and rhythm of openings. Staff recommends approval of the project with the following conditions: applicant obtain final approval of material selections for foundation materials, cladding, roofing, trim, porch elements, windows, doors, and site elements prior to purchase and installation. The overall width of the proposed infill be reduced to 34 feet. The cladding material of the dormer match the primary material of the main building, and applicant obtain approval of the material before purchase and installation. Walkway from the porch to the street be added to the site plan. The finished floor height be consistent with the finished floor heights of adjacent historic houses to be verified by MHZC in the field. Paired and ribbons of multiple windows should have a 4- to 6-inch mullion in between each window, and the HVAC shall be located behind the house or on either side beyond the midpoint of the house, and utility meters be located on the side of the building. With these conditions, staff finds that the project meets the design guidelines. The applicant is here as well, but I can take questions, too.
Thank you, Joseph.
Thanks.
Applicant?
Good afternoon. My name is Nick Corney, and I'm here with Dwell Architecture. One update is that we would consider this a two-story house, that upstairs is an attic, and there is still historic structures on that same block for it. The image that is, or the slide that you see above you shows those two structures that we could find that are wider than the staff's recommendation of 34 feet. So we've, again, we did find a mix of structures in Edge Hill between one to two-and-a-half stories. We determined that a two-story was appropriate based on communications with historic staff. We decided to stick with the 37 feet 6-inch width and bring it before the commission because of the historic precedent in the neighborhood, which is just on the block from 1008 C Villa. And then the design system that we're using for it, which is a historic design system based off a book written in 1922, it's called Small Houses and Their Economical Design. And then the overall floor plan and massing is four-square house, which is most of the contributing structures on that block. So with the width being the only thing that we are not in accordance with, with staff recommendation, we still find that it fits with the historic context that we can find on that same block, and would appreciate the staff approving the design as currently designed.
Thank you. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Oh, sorry, come through?
I'm Ronald Miller, 905 Villa Place and 1017 15.
Good to see you, Mr. Miller.
All right, thank you. I was just wondering about the width. Could be a little bit more explanation about that. He's asking for more than 34 feet to how much more?
37.
And a half.
Right, and a half.
Okay. Why 34 is not appropriate?
We'll be discussing after we close public hearings. Maybe you can hear more of our discussion and logic.
But to clarify, as designed, they have designed it as 37 and 1/2 feet wide, and our staff, according to our guidelines, is recommending that it be reduced to 34 feet maximum.
Because--
Wonder why, you know, more? Did I hear something about larger areas or rooms?
I'm not sure. We're recommending it be small. The staff is recommending it be smaller.
Sure, okay, that's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Miller. Anyone else? Just want to make sure everyone has opportunity to speak if they would like to. Okay. All right, I think we've had all the public hearing that we will have open, and we will close-- had all the public hearing that we will have open and we will close public hearing. So, discussion?
Yeah, I think, I think it's a pretty large house. You know, there are some, Joseph pointed out some instances of context in the immediate vicinity, which again, we look to that immediate vicinity. But I think it's already at the tallest end of that historic context, which is a little bit sparse. And so therefore, I definitely think with the max height essentially that they're at in this context, that the, the width does need to be, something needs to be reduced. Overall, it's too large as designed. So I'm in agreement with that. You know, it's a 50, I looked on partial, 50.3 foot wide lot. So I think that's, you know, I just think it's too big as designed, so.
No comments? Okay. Anyone want to make a motion?
Chair, I'm, with regard to 1008 C Villa Place, I recommend that we agree with staff and recommend approval of the project with their, their conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. There's a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, next up is 1417 Woodland Street. 1417 Woodland is a circa 1910 contributing house in Lachlan Springs. The house has an original side porch that shows in the 1914 Sanborn map. This is an application for the substantial demolition of the porch, its reconstruction and enclosure, and the construction of a side addition to the rear of the porch. So kind of a lot going on here, but it's all happening at that porch. The submitted photographs and documentation indicate that much of the porch has been replaced piecemeal over the years and what remains is in poor condition. The applicant plans to reconstruct the porch to the current configuration. Staff finds that given the current condition, the demolition and reconstruction of the porch could be appropriate. Front porches are regularly approved for reconstruction and conservation overlays when the existing structure is in poor condition. So staff finds that this reconstruction could be appropriate as well. Once the porch is reconstructed, the applicant would like to enclose it with glass. The guidelines state that the creation of an addition through the enclosure of a side porch may be appropriate if the enclosure is constructed in such a way that the historic form, openings, and features of the porch remain visible and prominent and the enclosure has an open design. As such, staff finds a proposed enclosure to be appropriate, subject to staff approval of the windows or glass to be used. The final element of this project involves an addition to the back of the side porch. Staff finds that the proposed addition is not appropriate. Porch enclosures are appropriate only when the historic form is retained. So enclosing the porch would be appropriate, but expanding its footprint would not be. Further, this construction of a side addition is not appropriate here as the property does not meet the requirements for a side addition. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the demolition, reconstruction, and enclosure of the historic side porch with the following conditions. Number one, dimensioned photographs of the porch shall be provided prior to permitting. And this is something that this actual same applicant provided to us when they rebuilt the front porch and it was super helpful. So we wanted to require that as a condition. Number two, a rear elevation of the enclosed porch shall be provided because if you deny the addition, then we want to see what the back of that porch is going to look like. Number three, the final materials, including windows, will be reviewed and approved by staff prior to purchase and installation. And if a new unit is needed, the HVAC shall be located behind the house or on either side beyond the midpoint of the house. With these conditions, staff finds the proposed work will meet the listed, the listed guidelines here. Also, staff recommends disapproval of the proposed addition at the rear of the porch, finding that it does not meet Section 6 of Part 1 of the Design Guidelines. I know the applicant is here and wants to speak. Do you have questions for me first? I know it's kind of a lot of different pieces involved.
Any questions at the moment?
I think certainly they're going to come to you with the glazing option for the infill.
Right.
That just to the eye is appearing to get really close to eclipsing the maximum size of an unbroken sheet of glass. So that's certainly something we'd want to take into account if it looks different than maybe more of a trans, a transom or some other setup might. They might find when they go to manufacturer that that would, unless it was storefront, that that would be problematic to make something that large.
And that's something that we feel comfortable, if you approve the project overall, that's something we feel comfortable approving on administrative level. If they wanted to, you know, divide those windows in some way, as long as the porch still reads as a porch and it's primarily open, be what we're looking for there.
Thank you, Jenny. Applicant?
Afternoon. Hi, everyone. My name is JP Harris. I'm a licensed home improvement contractor. I'm based at 701 South 16th Street in Nashville, 37206. I've been specializing for the last 22 years in historic repair and restoration work. Notable projects I've completed in the recent years are the case in cornice work on the Colonel Lachlan Mansion at 17th and Holly, period correct reproduction exterior mill work in Ballistreades at 109 South 13th, and the full exterior restoration of 1113 Holly Street, which is still currently underway. I am here today on behalf of my client, Kevin Ansel, who is the owner and resident of 1417 Woodland Street. Pardon me. Mr. Ansel and his family, as was explained, would like me to construct a small addition in addition to rebuilding the side original porch on the house. As Jenny did explain, I think I can skip some of my prepared speech for you in making a case about the extensive damage on the house, which did include noting that there are very few original architectural components on the house, save the fluted pilasters at two corners. All of the original beam work, the crown molding, the parting bead, decking, and handrails are poorly reproduced, not period correct dimensions, and are not original features. Doesn't sound like I really need to make my case on the demolition and reconstruction so much as the addition. To take a quick moment and speak to the note about glazing, we would plan on using a sunroom type glazing with minimal division so we can use a full open span.
And I misread the dimensions.
Oh, no, that's.
You're good to go.
Okay, great.
I apologize. I was mistaken.
Great. So, as you can see in the CAD renderings that we have drafted, forgive me because I'm not a huge PowerPoint guy here. From this angle, you can notice that there's very, it would less than double the footprint of the sunroom enclosure. And in this side angle rendering, which would, is an angle that is not viewable from the street, the only way to get this perspective would be to be standing on the neighbor's porch, front porch. Then you begin to get a real world idea of how much of the addition would be visible. And pardon my low tech iPhone photo here. But you can see this is standing on the sidewalk at the most head on vantage point of the porch that even less of the proposed addition would be visible from the street. And when taken in proportion with the rest of the home, it is less than 5% of the total view from the street. I would also like to reference two other points of note, which is that the proposed addition, in my understanding, the staff would move to not approve because of the alteration of a street view of the home. I would note that it is on the northwest side, which makes it technically opposite the street view. I would also say that once the sunroom glass is installed in the porch area, the rebuilt porch, its inherently minor reflective nature would further obscure the view of the addition from the street. The only other case that I would really make in favor of this addition would be precedent in the neighborhood. As you can see in this photo, I want to note street facing alterations of these two nearby properties, which I assume fall under the same overlay. I'm not 100% sure about that because one is on the opposite side of the street. But these were both apparently permitted, one very recently. This first slide I'm showing you currently just went on the market this week. It shows heavily modified roof lines at 1510 Woodland. It is a more recent, but nonetheless historic home on the same block, none of which conform to the period stylings of the home's original construction. This is one example that's within eye shot of 1417. And then I would also note 1419, which is right next door to my client's home, where street facing original pilasters were replaced with roughsawed six by six material and feature neither plinths nor capitals of the home's original architectural era. So it is in my opinion, and if these much more visible modifications were allowed on the same block, that surely the project discussed here would have far less impact on the street view and aesthetic of the neighborhood. And I think that's about all the argument I have to make and I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Questions for me?
Not at the moment. Thank you. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? And discussion? Go for it, Commissioner.
Madam Chair, I do have a kind of technical question to the staff. So I'm trying to understand, you know, we do time to time approve rear addition. And, and then sometimes, I think this is a kind of unique application, asking for the porch enclosure and then asking for the addition. So would we possible to see this as a, you know, rear addition? But if it's rear addition, we do require inset and also different material, correct?
That's correct. So the problem isn't so much the addition itself or the square footage of the addition, it's where it is. We wouldn't, this, this property is not eligible for a side addition. You need to have a certain lot size or be shifted on a lot. So this isn't eligible for that. A rear addition, we would want you to be insetting from the rear corner and this is adding on to a side porch. So there, there are a couple of reasons that this doesn't really work for us. But yes, a rear addition would be fine, but it's the location of where they're proposing to put this. It changes the footprint of that historic side porch, which we don't want to see happen. And it doesn't have an appropriate inset. So that, and it's a side addition. So there's several different injections.
Yeah, that's what I was reading, but I just wanted to make sure of the way you analyze. And, you know, try to see the different angle, but no matter how I try to see different angle, it seems like location itself seemed to be the problem.
That is the problem, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll see. Well, quite modest, while quite modest, I think the, the unbroken freeze board at the top and all those things that make it look like side porch, but larger are objections, I think, to the guidelines and that the staff has, I feel like appropriately applied and stated with, with regard to this. Despite the modest ask, it didn't, didn't quite get there in terms of conforming to the guidelines with the, as far as the addition to the side, the side addition goes as it's viewed and stated by the staff. So with respect to, if there's no further discussion with respect to 1417 Woodland Street, I move approval of the application to reconstruct the side porch and enclose it with the addition, the side addition being disapproved, which those, that would be in, in corresponding to the staff's recommendation.
There's a motion?
Second.
There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion carries. Thank you.
Our next item today is an addition at 1515 Paris Avenue. The applicant is proposing to construct an addition and an outbuilding. The addition attaches at the rear. It's inset two feet on each side and is no taller or wider. The roof is gabled to the rear with side shed dormers. The roof form is compatible with roofs of historic houses. The materials are concrete block foundation, cement fiber siding, asphalt shingle roof, and these are appropriate materials. The outbuilding is one and a half stories with a footprint of 750 square feet. The height is 24 feet, which does not exceed the height of the house, with eaves nine feet above finished floor. The height and scale are appropriate and the materials of the outbuilding match those of the addition. The site plan shows the outbuilding with a three foot setback from the rear property line. The applicant has agreed to move that to five feet, which would meet the setback requirements. Staff recommends approval of the addition and outbuilding at 1515 Paris Avenue with the conditions that partial demolition, partial demolition, excuse me, ensuring plan be reviewed prior to permitting, that the partial demolition is accomplished manually and not until a demo ensuring plan have been received. Outbuilding be situated five feet from the rear property line, that staff approves window and door selections, shingle color, that windows on the side facades of the historic house remain, and that the chimney is clad in a masonry, masonry material and that the masonry material is approved. And finally, that the HVAC is located behind the house or on either side behind the midpoint. And with those conditions, staff finds this application meets the applicable design guidelines.
Thank you, Sean. Is the applicant here?
They are.
My name is Mark Lynn and I drew the plans. And so the applicant asked me to come and just if there were any questions and possibly I could answer them. So if you have anything, I'm here.
How are you with the recommendation?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you in your?
I talked with staff and everything looks great.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Commissioners?
All right, seeing no discussion, let's move it forward. With respect to 1515 Paris Avenue, recommend approval as submitted with the staff's recommendations.
Motion?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you again. Thank you, applicant.
Next is 1703 Sweetbrier. This is an application for infill. Staff has issued a demolition permit for this existing non-contributing house on the site. Just wanted to show you some historic context photos to begin with. You can see there's kind of a range of one, one and a half, two, maybe you call that two and a half story houses on this block. There really is a good mix. And there, there's also some newer infill as well. The applicant is proposing a two and a half story form, which is the largest form that would be appropriate here. The proposed ridge height is about 35 feet from the highest point of grade in the front. This is several feet taller than the historic house with an identical form right across the street. We'll look at that in a minute. But there are other historic houses with similar forms that are about 37 feet tall. So staff felt that this 35 foot height could be appropriate here. The foundation, the foundation, eve, and porch heights are all appropriate. So here's that house I was talking about that's across the street. It's a historic house with kind of an identical two and a half story form with a portico share. The applicant is proposing a 34 foot width for the main massing with a 12 foot portico share. While the 34 feet itself might be appropriate on this lot, when combined with that portico share, the result is a structure which essentially is stretching from side setback to side setback. Staff finds that in evaluating the overall context, the combined massing of that 35 foot height with the 34 feet plus 12 feet addition or width could be too much. The infill matches the tallest appropriate form for this context at two and a half stories. And this historic house across the street has the same form, but is three feet shorter and its main massing is two feet narrower. Now, the infill doesn't need to exactly match the proportion of any individual historic house. That's not what we're saying. But nor should it mimic one house so closely, but be both wider and taller. Staff recommends reducing the width of the main massing by two feet to help create a more appropriate overall massing. The design meets the setback requirements. The applicant has included the cantilevered bays on the site plan and there are no setback issues with those. The applicant is proposing a new curb cut for the driveway and portico share. Typically, we don't like new curb cuts. We don't allow them. But driveways from Sweetbrier are common on this block, so staff finds that to be appropriate here. are common on this block, so staff finds that to be appropriate here. The materials need to be reviewed as usual. One specific call-out we had was the front steps are identified as being brick veneer. We don't allow that typically. Those should be wood or concrete. Here are the side elevations. Staff finds overall they're nicely articulated. We like these cantilevered bays that are appropriate one-story bays. We do recommend that a window be added in this location here, kind of in the red box along the right side elevation. That's a long expanse of blank wall that we don't typically allow. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the proposed infill with the following conditions. The standard finished floor height should be consistent with adjacent historic houses to be verified by staff in the field. The front steps shall be wood or concrete, and all materials should be approved prior to purchase and installation. The main massing of the house shall be reduced in width by at least two feet. A window shall be added on the blank wall on the second level of the right side elevation, and all paired windows shall be separated by four to six inch mullions. With these conditions, staff finds a proposed addition and out, or there is no outbuilding, it's a typo, the proposed addition will meet the design guidelines for Belmont Hillsborough. I know the applicant is here, but do you have questions for me first?
Jenny?
Mosley looks like he's thinking about it now.
Probably. Applicant?
Lee Ross Dinwiddie, the designer with Craft Studio, P.O. Box 743 Franklin, Kentucky. We, we knew that the width was a, was a initial issue, but our lot is also 20% wider than most of the neighboring context. And the earlier applicant with the 36-foot wide house had, was on a 50-foot wide lot. We're on a 60-foot wide lot. Sorry, he was 38 feet wide, I believe. We're 36. So we're 20% wider lot and a only slightly smaller, slightly wider house. The width of the house is a direct contribution to the height of the ridge because the roof is spanning side to side. So we could entertain a lower pitch on the roof to lower the ridge, but we'd really like to keep the house at the, at the 36-foot wide. We think that with the wider lot, we, we fit the scale of the lot, but I do understand the context. If, if you branch out your context to, from just immediate touching parcels, a couple blocks away, we have 36, 37-foot wide houses. So we thought if you're taking context, maybe it's a few block radius.
Okay.
Questions? Otherwise, conditions would be fine.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's condition three. All right, open public hearing? Close public hearing?
I'm a little, this is a question for staff. More curiosity and maybe a, let's say a disagreement as much as want to see how you read, read the, the width and the mass of it at the street as compared to the house across the street, which it was, I think, you know, in the presentation, it's kind of modeled after. You know, in the house across the street, the portico chair is flush with the front of the, the house, and so its appearance is larger on, on the street. And when I was here in the presentation and then compared it to this and the side elevations, the portico chair here is pushed back. And while in plan and in straight elevation, it appears really wide, with that portico chair pushed back, I'm less bothered, I guess. You know, if it were to the front, it would certainly loom over the street much more. And I don't know whether I'm compelled as much by the applicant's desire to keep it as wide. I'm, I'm less disturbed, I guess, by this one, the height to width ratio and the presence on the street with its openness and, you know, the distance between the street and with the portico chair pushed back. That's meaningful to me, but maybe I'm crazy, I don't know. It just, that's kind of my read on it initially looking at it. Do you?
I thought there was a question.
There wasn't a question there as much as, did you, I, I guess I was, the, the house across the street is two feet less wide, the actual stone portion of the house.
Correct.
And then this one is, yet it has that element of the portico chair sort of giving it more presence or width appearance from the street. Again, it just depends on how you look at it and how you measure.
So, yes, the house across the street is, the main massing of the house is two feet narrower, its portico chair is two feet wider. So if you measure from wall to portico chair, they're the same width, but the main massing of the proposed infill is two feet wider. You know, it's always kind of a tension between height and width and like where, where's the right box?
There's not, there's not a right answer here as much as there is appropriateness.
That's why we're here today. Because the applicant and staff didn't quite agree where that was. So, you know, that's, that's what we're bringing before you today. We felt that, you know, going a few feet taller and a few feet wider, we, we just don't want to be creating info that looks like puffed-up versions of historic homes. And, and, you know, to your point, that that portico chair has stepped back, that the massing is different. But, but that's what, that's where our thinking came from.
That was, yeah, and that's what I wanted. The question was really to kind of reaffirm or hear the perspective from which the staff, the conclusions you drew from having reviewed it and why you have taken the recommendation that you have. That's very helpful. Thanks.
We, we, we close public hearing, but if the commissioners want to ask a question?
Yeah, I think he's, he's got some time left for rebuttal, but I think.
By close public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry.
But you can ask questions, Commissioner? Absolutely. You can ask a question.
Are we okay with the applicant? Yeah, so the, how far back is, or in terms of placing the portico chair on the house, was that done just to get the?
Right. We felt the main massing of the house.
Not parked in the front yard, I guess, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. We thought the main massing of the house should be first, and the, the portico chair or any other element should be secondary. So it's 13-foot foreback from the house, another eight feet back from the porch, so it's, you know, pushing 21 feet from the front of the house, so it's definitely secondary. And, you know, on the note of being wider and taller, same thing, we didn't want to be even more imposing with that fascia line continuing like the one across the street.
Sure.
And on, on the matter of being taller, if we went from an 812 to a 712, our ridge would already, would drop 18 inches since we're 36 feet wide. So if we were slightly wider on a much bigger lot, but we were not taller, we may help fit the context, just on change from a 712 to an 812 pitch.
And you said, just on the fly, that 712, really, you don't think that, that wouldn't, you wouldn't be harmed by that in terms of your impression of the house?
No, we, we would lower the, the dormer as well, that's easy. But, but on a 36-foot wide, 112 pitch, we're going to pick up 18 inches right away.
Thanks for that.
And then for our context, kind of our initial research, it's 1610 Cedar, there's a 36-foot wide house, also has the carport, and a 2512 Belmont is a 34-foot wide but even wider side offset. So the, the main massing of that house is narrower, but it's wider in total. So here, we, we were just a little more straight shot, so we pushed back on the carport. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Yeah, I think that's a good compromise as well, you know, for, really, the thing is the massing of, of wider and taller, both.
I'm interested in hearing the other, other commissioners' opinions about how they read the house from the street and looking at it. It's deceiving oftentimes looking at something in straight elevation.
I do appreciate a great question coming from Commissioner Mosley. Now, I can see the difference from the across the street with the straight roof line makes the house much wider than actually is. And if, you know, what they call the pork. I will not even.
Portico chair.
Yes. I'd have to pronounce that one.
French thing happening here.
Yes. So that being pushed back, but one thing I do appreciate is, you know, the house not being the tallest and widest. So if applicant is willing to work with the staff and to somehow appearance of not tallest or reduce the roof line or, you know, additional work can be done to not, you know, mass it on the street, that would be preferable. But we are not here to design the house. So, yeah, I would like to encourage the applicant and staff to make it not the house to be the tallest and widest.
That would be part of that motion, because addressing that.
I'm, I'm in agreement. I think Commissioner Mosley did bring up a great point of that, the, the fascia line of the portico chair. And it, it does have an impact visually, but I'm still uncomfortable with the house, just as Commissioner Johnson just spoke to, being both one of the tallest, you know, and one of a wider home. It's just, for a new infill, there's really no constraints to, to what you're doing. I, I just, I'm uncomfortable with that. So, you know, then Commissioner Mosley might have had a, you know, thoughts on that. But again, we're not here to design the home, but I'm not sure what that solution is, as long as it's something, you know, I think staff has come up with a solution that they were comfortable with, that they thought might be good. But, you know, if, if that's not what the end design that they want is, I just, I think as a, me as a commissioner, I'm uncomfortable with it being this large, and any iteration where it's smaller will be better for me.
I was compelled by the, I was compelled by the, the applicant's presentation, and even before I heard Commissioner Mosley's comments, I was ready to say, okay, well, let's make an inception in this case. But I'm grateful for your presentation, and, and I'm willing to go in whatever direction the board is. I'm compelled by the, the applicant's.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, you have a comment?
No, no comment.
You can?
Good.
I mean, you know, even if you approve or disapprove, I mean, approve, there's the recommendations and they'll continue to work with staff, so instead of rewriting a recommendation.
I'll give it a shot.
Okay.
With respect to 1703 Sweetbrier Avenue and given the applicant's presentation of buildings that are within the district and nearby, certainly, I think, considered as context, perhaps not directly adjacent context, I find the application to be, as presented, to be acceptable with the following modifications to the staff recommendation. In lieu of item three, reducing the pitch from the as-presented 812 to 712, I would move approval of 1703 Sweetbrier with staff's recommendations and the amendment to condition three.
There's a motion?
Second.
There's a second? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Okay? Jenny, we've given good instructions there. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, applicant.
The next case is 602 Monroe Street. The house at 602 Monroe Street is a circa 1870s contributing house in the Germantown Historic Preservation zoning overlay. The applicant proposes construction of an addition to the contributing house at 602 Monroe. The addition does not extend wider nor taller than the historic house. A setback determination is needed because although the addition does not extend beyond the historic building, it is only located approximately two feet from the north side property line. Given that the proposed addition aligns with the existing structure and that the existing structure is only located approximately two feet from the north side property line, staff finds this north side setback appropriate. The proposed addition meets all other base zoning setbacks. A hot tub and fence are also indicated on the site plan, but there is not enough information to review these features of the project at this time. The applicant also proposes some window changes to the existing structure. In the following slides, the top elevation is the existing elevation and the bottom elevation is what is being proposed. On the north elevation, the applicant proposes reconfiguring the windows beyond the midpoint of the home by removing an existing window and adding three new windows beyond the midpoint. Staff finds these window changes appropriate since they are beyond the midpoint of the home and minimally visible, given the narrow constraints of the lot. The applicant also proposes adding a new window forward of the midpoint of the home on the north elevation. Staff does not find this new window appropriate since, since it is forward of the midpoint and visible from the street. On the south elevation, the applicant proposes changes to the sunroom windows. Staff finds these changes appropriate as the existing windows and their configuration would not have been original to the house. The applicant also proposes window changes toward the rear of the side elevation, removing an existing window and adding two new windows. Staff finds these changes appropriate as they are beyond the midpoint and minimally visible due to the narrow constraints of the lot. While the proposed addition is not set in from the existing building's sidewalls, staff finds the addition is visually distinguished from the existing structure. In this case, given the narrow footprint of the existing structure, staff finds it appropriate to differentiate the addition from the existing structure by stepping down the height rather than stepping in the footprint. Staff finds that the proposed addition meets the design guidelines in terms of design, height, scale, massing, placement, materials, proportion and rhythm of openings, roof design, utilities, sidewalks, walkways, and surface parking. Staff recommends approval of the addition and the setback determination with the following conditions. A partial demolition ensuring plan be reviewed, partial demolition be accomplished manually and not begin until a partial demo ensuring plan has been approved and the building has been shored. The siding remain on the historic house as is or be viewed prior to removal. The HVAC shall be located behind the house or on either side beyond the midpoint, and utility meters be, be located on the side of the building. The proposed window forward of the midpoint of the existing structure's north elevation be removed. Shown lap siding with corner boards not exceed five inches. Paired in windows have a four to six inch mullion between. All permanent landscape features, including but not limited to fences, pathways, pavers, parking, parking pads, pools, et cetera, shall be reviewed and approved before installation. And final material selections for foundation materials, cladding, roofing, trim, porch elements, windows, doors, and side elements are reviewed and approved prior to purchase and installation. With all of these conditions, staff finds that the project meets the design guidelines. I can take questions, and I know the applicant is here as well.
I do, I have a question that I think is, since we're asked, being asked to provide a setback that is, and maybe the applicant will address this in the drawings can, but if, I, I think I've run this trap before, and I think anything less than three feet, it's outside, it's not a metro issue, it's a, it's a building code issue that there would need to be fire-rated glass and glazing, and that it'd need to be a fire-rated wall because it is that close to the property line. Has there been any indication in the review of, or the applicant's drawings or in the review that has taken that into account if we're going less than three feet?
I, I, we've mentioned it to the applicant, and I, I think that, that is something they will need to address with, with codes and make sure that that's, that's designed appropriately.
And that can certainly have an influence on the amount of, the types of windows that are available to choose from and the manufacturers and such.
Sure.
I have a general question.
Yeah.
So reading the staff recommendation that the siding be smooth without an embossed grain, and that's recommends and not required. So historic, and, and again, is that not a requirement for it to be smooth and not embossed, and it's not just a recommendation? Does that make sense?
It's, it's a, our recommendation to you all that is approved with that commission, with that condition. But yes, the guidelines.
Are specific?
Mm-hmm.
That they should do it with, shall, with smooth siding. And I, I'm, I have, that's my neighborhood, and so I do look at siding sometimes more than, than not. And so there's been some that have done a renovation that had the embossed. So just want to be really clear that when you're under historic overlay, that that is a shall and not a recommendation.
Yes, and we will also, before anything is installed on the project, we would want to review that material and make sure it meets our approval and meets the design guidelines.
I also have another general question. So, you know, in projects that we have reviewed, and when an applicant wants to move a historic piece, we, I don't think we've ever, you know, we, our recommendation is you keep it as is. So those windows that are going to be removed, are those historic? And why would we allow historic piece to be moved?
They're added. Well, one, one is removed and then some are added. I get your question.
What I got the add, but.
Yeah, reconfiguration going on. In this case, we found it could be appropriate because it's beyond the midpoint, it's a very narrow lot, and it's, it's hard to see those windows from the street. But it's something staff debated as well, so I think it's up to the commission if you find that appropriate. If, if. up to the commission if you find that appropriate. If you feel it's not appropriate in this case, you know, I think that's your call to make.
I just want to bring that up, because it's, you know, again, we do things by site, site per site. And I think that's some of the questions, you know, that we get ourselves caught in, is to say you've done it for one, and you're not doing it for this one. But I just want to caution ourselves when we make decisions like that, that we're clear on why we're doing it.
Yeah.
Any other comments for that, please?
Just to that point, I find in the, I mean, I guess the question, I'm just reading again, staff finds changes, well, new window appropriate on the south elevation of the sunroom windows, never mind. Specific of the sunroom windows, they, staff has found that it could be appropriate because it wasn't the original configuration, but not the other.
Right.
The other side had different things going on.
Yeah, the sunroom windows there are definitely not original on that south side.
Yeah, they weren't original. Correct.
Yeah. And those are forward of the midpoint as well. So, even, we found that to be more appropriate in that case.
And a lot of times when they do window changes, it's because of a floor plan that that's not our purview, you know, in terms of a floor plan change. I just want to, just with our discussions, to be sure that when we do these kind of things, that we are consistent with our historic purview.
Any other questions for me?
Thank you. Thank you, Joseph. All right, applicant, are you here?
Hello, I'm Kyle Corey, the architectural designer for Merrill Construction Group at 4535 Harding Pike, Suite 300.
And I'm Morgan Brubaker, the interior designer for Merrill Construction Group.
Thank you.
So essentially, we're looking at our project. We have this home in the historic part of Germantown that's 35 feet wide, and the house itself is 24 feet wide. The overall footprint of the existing house is 1,400 square feet. Our residents have lived there for 30 years, and tend to spend the rest of their lives there. As we go into our design, as you'll see some of the floor plans, we've been trying to maximize the functionality for our residents while preserving the original characteristics and historic intent and architecture throughout. The goals of our project is to just increase the functionality and storage that they have access to, and then improve and maximize the natural light that they get through the addition and changes that we have proposed. So, as we look at the existing conditions, we have, this is the north side elevation. From the inside, there's one window in the kitchen, as you can see in the bottom right corner. The inside, due to counter space, the window itself has been raised up on the interior. So, this is another kind of aspect of the light that they have access to now being minimized by the functionality that they need access to. You can see the existing floor plan. Each of the rooms has about one window, except for the sunroom that has been, that wall has been changed. Then we have our proposed, we have the kitchen. If you look, you'll see that on either side of the existing window, proposing filling in the inside, so that window just appears as the opening from the exterior. But we have a window on either side to create this idea of symmetry on the other side of their range that they want to have there. We haven't changed any of the interior walls, except for removing this middle midline wall between the sunroom and the kitchen to expand access there. You can see that all of the existing openings have been maintained from room to room. The fireplace is maintained. This is really the only floor plan without making extensive changes to the original floor plan that we could come up with for them. And then you can see, as this window location, we have the midpoint of the house and the proposed window. It's very minimal. If you look, I don't know if these videos will work, but we originally had some video presentations just to show from either side the visibility of that window wall from this street, and then across the street from their sidewalk. Each video is approximately six to nine seconds long, and takes about 11 to 15 steps, depending on which side of the street you're on. So, the visibility is minimal for this project. If you can see in the previous slide, the distance between their house and the existing house is very minimal. It's probably about eight feet between the houses, already minimizing the amount of natural light they're going to get throughout the day. As we look at the existing structure again, you can see once, one more time, just what we've proposed. And then, to address the setback for the side, we have, we've not gone beyond the existing structure width, and we don't have a survey to reference for where exactly those setbacks are. We just referenced from the fence that separates the house lots. So, we saw that the existing fence on the north end is about two and a half feet from the side of our house. So, we do not know exactly where that setback lies, but it's at least within the two and a half feet from the fence. We decided that, based on the existing structure, it would be appropriate to continue the house and not extend beyond it, as it should be within setbacks due to the rectangular lot. If the existing house lies within the setbacks of three feet, that is in Nashville code. And then, just to overall summarize the arguments we have, which trying to preserve the existing entryways into the kitchen, along with the millwork and the original fireplace, maximize the natural light that our residents are going to have within this addition and alteration. And then, looking at the symmetry from within to create this floor plan that maximizes their functionality in this kitchen that they're going to be using for the rest of their lives. And then, looking at the low visibility of the window from the street for that one window that we're proposing beyond, in front of the midpoint of the house. And then, just looking at the setback of not extending the house beyond the original width. Thank you.
Do you have any comment for you?
I do not. No, I think he covered it pretty well, so.
Great. Okay, I'm going to wait for this discussion. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Commissioners, I want you to, I want to hear what your comments are going to be, but I'm going to have some comment as well. Oh, I'll go ahead and go. General comment, and I'm looking at design guidelines. I'm cautioned about taking out historic pieces. And again, with alterations, I mean, you know, look at those pages, three and four. You know, any kind of changing of historical materials should be avoided, should be retained and preserved. And again, this is one of those applications that I've seen in my years that I question because of a change of historic window, whether it's visible or not. Germantown is a historic overlay with beautiful homes. I know that house very well, and it's probably one of the older ones there, beautifully maintained, I'll say, with, with the current owner. But I think our purview is to preserve historic structures and materials. So, I just want to hear what the commission will say.
So, I don't live there anymore. I haven't lived in this neighborhood. I'm familiar with the row houses, maybe cottages that are along Monroe Street, and I designed some infill on the street. And I will say, one of the character-defining pieces of the cottages is, is that up close, not everyone is the same, but up close to the street, the facades are pretty blank, and that is in contrast to our guidelines where more windows, if this were new construction, more windows are nearly, are generally encouraged to break up blank facades. But several of those cottages have expanses where there, there aren't a lot of windows. I'm reminded of, I don't have a straight answer for yet, but I'm reminded of another project on Fifth Avenue, equally, actually, a grand, it wasn't a cottage, it was a two-story house of, you know, somebody at the time who had greater wealth and built a brick house. And behind the 50%, there was a opening that was changed behind the midpoint of the house. We had previously approved changing openings and/or modifying them, moving them. I don't remember the specifics of the case in terms of whether it was a window change to a door, or it was moved or filled in, but certainly I recall that it happened. It's on the Campbell's House that, that's in the five, another 1,200 block on the west side of the street. I recall that that was part of the application. I think it was approved. So, it's not unheard of in the district for, in a historic district for the commission to consider and approve that. Is it appropriate here? You know, I think the merits of this case sort of speak for themselves. I do recall that the argument at that time was beyond the midpoint, and I think that, that midpoint, if we're standing on anything, that midpoint is, is the place where we've stood in the past. And I would say if we're going to allow the alteration of openings, that we should stand in that same place, would be my recommendation, just for consistency's sake. I think, you know, there is an argument here for zoning codes were enacted, this doesn't necessarily speak to a specific guideline, but zoning codes were enacted to allow for light and air to be available. That's the basis of all zoning code. And so, I think allowing windows, and there is a door that we can walk through that, that would permit us to not have a extremely rigid position on where windows are. I don't know that, you know, biaxial symmetry is a solid argument for going beyond the midpoint of the house. I would tend to say no, but that certainly access to light and air on the interiors of a house that have, you know, very narrow lots, many other houses have other options of ways to, if the lot's wider and there's an addition and other things are going on, there are more options to do here. I think adding of windows is preferred to adding skylights and putting holes in roofs and things like that. Those are looked on more favorably, and this applicant is proposing windows that match the period of the house, which certainly are appropriate. So, it's not an inducement for everybody to think that the way I am, but that I do about this case, but as much to talk a little bit about the history of what we've done and what may or may not be appropriate.
I think your, your point is, again, you know, from the midpoint of the house is clearly consistent with what we've gone with guidelines. So, again, more, more discussion. It's good, good to hear that, too. I know, Ben, you've been involved with, in the past, with, with historic guidelines, so, and been on the commission long enough to see some of these examples pass through. So, to have some historical background is good.
May I ask a question to the staff? In that note, is there any past case, as a commission, we approved alteration of, such as window beyond midpoint, like a forward point? I think, I recall some cases, we approved alteration after the midpoint, but this one is one particular window is asking for, before the midpoint. I think that one particular window is the question opening. So, I'm just curious to know if this commission approved in such case.
I believe in the past, there have been cases where we have allowed adjusts, or where the commission has voted to allow adjustments beyond the midpoint. I can't recall any specific cases off the top of my head, but I believe so. And the guidelines do, you know, more closely allow something to happen beyond the midpoint than they do forward of the midpoint, of course.
So, is there a case forward of the midpoint you approved?
Oh, forward of the midpoint.
Yeah, for, yeah. My question was, because this particular window asking is forward of the midpoint. So, I am curious.
Have we ever allowed changes forward of the midpoint?
Yes.
Not that I can...
Unless there was, things have been changed before.
Yeah, I would say that it's never happened, but it certainly could be very rare in this case. Perhaps there are particulars for that house, like a window that it was likely to have already been moved.
Moved.
Yeah, the house been changing, a window to a door where, you know, reflex or something required to be addressed, but from the midpoint, just to make the floor cover.
Yeah. And I would suggest we hold that line.
Thank you. Yeah. I am, you know, very, very sympathetic of the wanting to have, you know, light window, but I think this house has plenty of window, you know, beyond midpoint. So, I am kind of wary of accepting, you know, alteration forward of the midpoint. I have no problem, you know, alteration. And I think staff recommendation is spot-on, and we do need additional window on, you know, expansion of the large wall as well. So, I am inclined to support staff recommendation.
Great. Good. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think that has been a good discussion, and Chair Bell brought it up. For me, that additional window midpoint that staff is calling out is an absolute, I'm in agreement with that. And I think that, again, what Chair Bell said, the larger discussion is, you know, should that be, and then additionally, you know, they're altering, you know, but again, beyond the midpoint, things like that. I guess I'm kind of going back and forth between those, but, you know.
And that we don't blanket every decision we make. We look at that point by point and property by property. So, I mean, we, we want the public to hear that we do have reasonable decisions, but, and to also hear that when you do have a development, that you take that into consideration, and don't just think because you have the light, and as Commissioner Mosley has said, that of course, we all want to live in light, but that, that's not a given, that you can do that because you have a floor plan. Just, again, general discussion for public hearing. It's compelling. I mean, you know, we, staff works really hard on trying to make things that, that are with the guidelines and that works. So, I appreciate the discussion, however this goes.
Any other comments, Dr. Williams?
As a newest guy on this committee, I was really interested in hearing how you've dealt with these issues in the past. I don't have a good grasp of the institutional history of these type issues. But as a preservationist, I'm reluctant or reticent to make changes to original features and historic properties. So, when in doubt, I lean back to my preservationist roots. So, all that is to say that I stand in support of staff recommendations.
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
I concur with the comments that have been made here, because if we allow this one, then, you know, as you've heard before, they said, why did you approve this one and not this one? And, and so, we, we need to be consistent, I would think. not this one? And so we, we need to be consistent, I would think. So I approve the staff recommendations as well.
Okay. Want to make a motion?
Sure.
Unless we have other discussion.
None for me.
Mr. Mosley?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Madam Chair, with respect to 602 Monroe Street, I recommend that, I make a motion that we adopt all staff recommendations on this property.
There's a motion?
Second.
There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you.
All right. This is a request to construct infill at 1418 Bosco Bell Street. Earlier this month, staff issued a preservation permit to demolish the non-contributing house on this lot. The subject property is, is the middle house in the top photo that you see here, while the house, the two-story house to the right is infill that was approved by the commission in April 2021. Here are some additional context photos on this block of Bosco Bell Street. The proposed infill is centered on the lot and meets all setbacks, including the front setback, which is approximately halfway between the houses to either side. The 14 to 1600 blocks of Bosco Bell Street have little historic context and many two-to-three story modern homes were built on this block prior to the adoption of the overlay. Given the lack of context, the guidelines state that infill up to two stories can be appropriate on these blocks. The proposed infill will be very similar to the infill that was approved to the right of this property with some changes to the detailing and the materials. The infill, staff finds that the height and scale of the proposed infill to meet the guidelines. The front elevation includes brick to grade. Staff recommends a change in material at the foundation level here to meet the guidelines and applicant has agreed to this condition. Here we have the left elevation and the right and the rear. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the project with the following, with the conditions set forth in the staff recommendation. The applicant is not here, but has, has agreed to all of the recommended conditions.
Very good.
All right. Any questions for you?
Questions? Okay. Since applicant is not here, open public hearing and close public hearing. Any discussions other than, other than a motion?
With no, with everybody in agreement, I would recommend that we make, that I make a motion that we adopt the staff recommendations for 1418 Bosco Bell Street.
Motion?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you.
That was me. I was, I'm gonna make sure I get the minutes right before I move on to the next. All right. 1814 Holly Street. This is an application to construct infill and an outbuilding on a vacant lot. The house that stood there previously was destroyed by the tornado in 20, March 2020. The proposed infill will be one and a half stories, 28 feet tall at the ridge from the highest point of grade. The footprint will be irregular, 33 feet wide at the front with a wraparound porch and projecting elements on each side, bringing the total width to 42 feet wide. The height is compatible with the surrounding historic context. The width is greater than the average width, the average width of houses in the area, but staff finds it to be compatible, given that the width of this lot is greater than the typical width. And historically, houses on corner lots, at least the other lots of this intersection, are historically wider than the average of mid-block lots. The roof is a cross gabled form with shed dormers, which is compatible with the roofs of historic houses nearby. The orientation setbacks to materials and the window proportion and pattern are appropriate as well. Staff recommends a different stylistic elements on the front porch columns that have capitals and bases and a porch rack or beam. The outbuilding is one and a half stories as well, with a height drawn at 25 feet 6 inches, a wall height of 12 feet 6 inches, and a footprint of 997 square feet. With the condition that the wall heights are, wall height and ridge height are reduced by six feet to the maximums permitted by the guidelines, staff finds that this outbuilding meets the scale and massing are appropriate and meet the guidelines. Also, the roof is gabled with two foot 6 inch eve overhang and dormers that total 14 feet 6 inches wide. Those also exceed the limits of the design guidelines by six inches. So staff recommends a condition that the eve overhang not exceed two feet and that the dormers don't exceed 14 feet wide in total. But otherwise, staff finds this roof form to meet the design guidelines. And the setbacks and orientation of the building are appropriate, as are the materials. Staff recommends approval of the infill and outbuilding with the following conditions: that the finished floor height is consistent with the floor heights of adjacent houses, to be verified by staff; that the HVAC is located behind the house or on the side beyond the midpoint; that masonry samples, window and door selection, roof shingle color, and walkway and driveway materials are approved prior to purchase and installation; that a 18 inch to 3, 36 inch wide porch beam is added to the front porch; that the window in the upper story gable is revised to be vertically oriented; and that all double and triple window openings have four to six inch mullions; that a walkway is added from the street to the front porch; and that the roof height of the outbuilding is lower to not exceed 25 feet; that the wall height of the outbuilding is lower to 12 feet; and that the eve overhangs on the outbuilding are reduced to two feet; and that the total width of dormers on the alley facing side of the outbuilding not exceed 14 feet. And with those conditions, staff finds that the proposed infill and outbuilding meet the applicable design guidelines.
Thank you, Shaun. Any questions?
I have a question. Well, just, Shaun, there's a lot of dormers.
On the house, yeah.
I mean, from this angled rendering, it looks like it's about to take off. What, is there a discussion? I mean, was there, I'm just trying to read through, you know, the report a little again, but is it, is there a, is there a max number? Is there a max width, you know, to the, to the roof line? I know there's notes on that on the outbuilding specifically, but what, do you have, does staff have any comments on number of or size total?
I don't think we had a discussion about the number of dormers. I guess particularly on the top image there, which is actually street facing. We did have discussions among staff and then with the applicant about the scale of dormers, that they should be, that they are stepped back or what is proposed today. The outside face of the dormers is stepped in from the outside edge of the first story. And, I mean, a little bit of a, to a lesser degree, we talked about the, the roof pitch of the dormers. There was an earlier version where they were not symmetrical. So we talked about that. We definitely talked about the dormers, but we, I guess we didn't have concerns about the number of dormers because I don't recall it being, yeah, they're all, they are fairly narrow, narrow. They're, they're broken up. You know, we definitely would have talked about it if it was one big dormer, but I think the, the number of dormers, because each is appropriate, scaled on its own. But of course, you know, the commission is welcome to.
You think it's the flat drawings, that shading and?
I don't think I put a rendering.
I don't know if I, again, I don't know if I like it or dislike it. It doesn't matter if I like it or dislike it. It's just, it's, it is what it is. It's just, it's like in the top five for number of dormers I think I've seen.
All right. Shaun will ask questions if we do. And is the applicant here? Are you the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay, come on forth.
Maybe you can tell us why they've come in.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, if you have a height limit and it's, you want to maximize space, I get it.
That's what that is. That's what that is.
You want a two-story house, you got to put a bunch of dormers on it.
Hi, I'm Kurt McKeithen with McKeithen Design Studio, residence out in Mount Juliet. Address for our office is 8924 Stewart's Ferry Pike, turn the century old farmhouse. And I'm sorry about the dormers. We did have a couple other renditions of it and stuff. And there's always a way to come back to put one big center one, but it felt like it was off balance, especially in the 3D world of like, hey, when you're on that corner. And by, by the way, not to go on a tangent, but Holly Street, I used to live at 1109 Holly Street. And so it's a very dear street to me when I was working on this project. And I went over there many times to kind of see what it would be like in that area, walk around, drive by. And one of the biggest things was the wraparound porch for me, because 1109, it has a small wraparound porch. And I was like, this yard calls for it, the neighborhood calls for it. And so that's one of the reasons we came to that conclusion on the wraparound. But with the dormers, it's, it's something we were trying to figure out scale-wise, how wide to how thin, how many do we really need, how do we balance out? And then when you're looking at the front of the house, it's balanced also this way. So really, in a 3D world, it's like you got to have those two kind of be balanced. And then when you turn, you're kind of seeing those three, but you really can't skip one that's going to be offset a little bit from the windows down below. Let's kind of show you, make sure.
For the record, in no way am I advocating for one large dormer.
Well, this is kind of like where we kind of have those big windows on the bottom. I was trying to figure out a way to balance that out a little bit and just to kind of help out how that's going to work. And again, earlier, you know, Ben, when you talked about like, hey, in elevation status and how that looks, it's a big thing. I always tell my clients all the time, it's like, hey, it's, it's one thing seeing 2D, but when you go to 3D, what that feels like, because when you're walking around it, it's a totally different vibe. So it's one of those things, it's like, how do you balance that out? Especially with even the back dormer near the rear above the mudroom, that's one of those things where it's like, I really wish we could have made that a little smaller. And it was like, how do you figure out that scale? But then I felt like it was going to be too repetitive. So that's, that's where I met with the dormers. But, but yeah, I think really all I can add to it is like, this has been a passion project here. Really enjoyed working on this. And I'm, I'm sorry, I'd never been to one of these meetings before. I worked on 1700 Fotherland with Centric and they kind of kept me up to date on all the things that were happening here. And, but it was always great. And I wish now I came to those meetings. So, but did y'all have any other questions or anything?
Just one question on the outbuilding. Are you agreeing with the staff recommendation of the height and eve?
Yes, ma'am, I am. I'll go back and change the height of that and stuff. I know we kind of went back and forth on a couple of things and there's a couple of things I think that we talked about and need to kind of correct on there. So I'm all for the changes and can make those really quick. Yeah.
Thank you. Very good. Any other questions, commissioners? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your time.
Yes, as yours. Open public hearing?
Good afternoon. My name is James Polk. I live directly across the street from the proposed house. I want to thank you first for your care and attention that you've given to the reconstruction of my neighborhood. We're in the center of an area of 12 to 14 houses, which ended up being demolished, as I'm sure you're quite aware. And we have seen a good bit of care going into this. I do have concern that time and time again, we've seen larger houses, much larger houses go in than what had been present in the neighborhood previously. And while we're thankful that people are interested in upgrading the neighborhood and returning to the neighborhood, that is something indeed of a concern. And I'm thankful for the comments about lowering the, the height of the outbuilding that was just mentioned. Again, I'm appreciative of receiving the notice of this. I didn't receive any notice previously of any of the other houses that were being constructed. And I saw my neighbor over here, former neighbor, out putting up signs and I did receive the notice of, of this meeting. Don't have a lot of comments other than that. The idea about the dormers is appreciated too. Beautiful construction plan, I think. I did notice one thing here that I'm not clear about, and that being a statement in regard to the setback determination on this particular house. And I didn't hear any conversation or mention of that as part of what has been said so far. Thank you. Appreciate your work and your care about our.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here as well. Just as a public comment as well, or general info, is this, it's, you, your notice, the noticing now is a new ordinance. So it has helped so far. It does add more tasks to our staff, but I think the neighbors can now have, you know, appropriate notice. And hopefully it will continue to be, you know, appreciated. So thank you. Do you want to address that question?
I think, yes, just about the setback. There, an earlier version of the outbuilding had, was not going to meet the rear setback from the alley. And that was something early that the, the applicant agreed to revise to meet the setback. So there is no, but they probably agreed to make that change after the letter was sent. So I certainly agree that the, the public notification requirements are, are helpful, but just the timing of when letters go out before the agenda's posted and things, sometimes things change. And that was, that, I think that explains the reason for that.
Is that clear for you then, Mr. Polk?
Difficult to get in touch with me. We were out of our house for 18 months. Lots of things happened.
Okay. Just want to make sure you were clear on your question. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Close public hearing. Commissioners?
I think there's maybe, I don't know, does there need to be more discussion about the dormers? I think in.
No, I mean, maybe it's just this, the 3D angle. But, I mean, I get, again, in no way am I advocating for one large dormer. I'm just, it just, there's a lot going on on this roof plane. Just, what is it, you know, what is it saying? You know, we want a one and a half ish story house. And then it's just, how much was the maximum we can put on the second, you know, floor inside and what do we have to do on the outside? You know, just discussions like that. But again, I don't think that this house, as staff has analyzed, doesn't, you know, isn't maxing out at all, at all fronts. So I think it's kind of a, a no, a no point probably. So I, I'm not in disagreement about the massing of the project in entirety.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I'm in agreement with, with your, how you, how you see it. And I, I think maybe we could have seen, as compared to other applications, that maybe don't meet approval and that would swell to, you know, as a one and a half story house, I, it's apparent that great care has gone into maximizing this, but also making it fit within the neighborhood. At least that's my read on it. And this, I mean, for what it's worth, not that, well, sometimes you drive by some that we've approved and, and because something meets the guidelines doesn't necessarily cause it to meet the eye well from the street.
Visually.
I don't think, I'll be driving by this one once it's constructed, that it will fit within that category. So it seems well crafted in.
Cringe, yes.
Yeah, exactly. In, in the third dimension. So that's, I'll, I'll stop talking.
So is that on that, which side is that? Which elevation is that? Is that on the roadside corner or what? Oh, yeah. Well, it has all kinds, yeah. It's dormers on each side. So yeah.
You know, you're looking at a bird's eye view, so.
Yeah, exactly. I get that, but it just seemed like a lot. But if that helps.
If that helps.
I think still the...
So that top picture, that's, what side of the house is that on?
Yeah, right.
The top is street-facing.
That's the street-facing?
Yeah, it's a corner lot.
One street-facing, yes. The other side is, is interior lot-facing, I think I'm right.
Interior lot, and then, yeah.
I know we're not here to design things, but would you feel more comfortable with what was two dormers?
No, I mean, I think, I think it, I mean, I do think it's, as the applicant stated, I mean, I, I think with the windows on the bottom and it being symmetrical, I do, it's, it's fine, it's just...
Yeah.
Well, I, for one, you know, I just love to hear people come up and say that it's a special project to them and, and they take great care and, and appreciate the neighborhood, and so that was good to hear. So I, I wish more people were as caring about their architects', architectural renderings. So with that being said, is there any more discussion? So with respect to 1,800-1,400, Holly Street, I recommend that we make a motion that we approve of staff recommendations.
Motion?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you again, applicant. I know we're towards the end of our agenda, so thank you for your patience as well. And we're not done yet, I think?
We, one more.
They left. It was 1,108 Montrose?
They stepped into the hall. I'll go let them know that.
Okay, gotcha. Also, are we gonna also hear the other two that had public comment? I, I heard that, but...
No, those were, those were approved as part of the consent agenda.
Public comment, yes.
It's just the one on Montrose that was pulled.
Because this is, because the public comment was they wanted it pulled to have discussion.
Right, right. The two other public comment were either not remain to your review or was in support of the project, so we didn't pull those from consent.
All right, sounds good. Good plan. 1,108, who's presenting that one? Okay. Of course, I didn't pull that off.
Are we not here in 10th Avenue?
That was deferred.
Deferred. Okay, great. And for some reason, we were one-on-one broadly.
Apologies.
That was, I know, that was...
Okay, if everyone's ready, I'm ready.
Yes, please proceed.
Sorry, so 1,108 Montrose was pulled off consent, and I think they're working out their issue in the hallway now.
Okay.
But since we've pulled it, I think we need to quickly talk about it.
Should we wait for them?
No. I'll explain, let me pull it up quickly.
Well, they're the ones that pulled it.
They are the ones who pulled it, and their issue is, they are neighbors and they're having an issue with alley access, which is not our purview. So I...
But should we not wait so that they can hear our discussion? I, I'm, just give me a moment.
I mean, they can either come in here right now or they're, we're not waiting.
They should come in here right now.
They've been alerted, they can come in here right now or...
But they don't have to, and we can move on.
We have to continue, we're continuing.
Okay.
I think now that we know what the issue is, I think we, we probably would not have pulled it from consent if we had known what the issue was ahead of time.
I got you.
Because the issue is not, is not part of our purview.
Okay.
If they want to, if they want to step in and listen, here they are.
Good. Thank you for giving me chair courtesy, because I, because I, you know, when that is, that was at the beginning, and I want to be sure that we have a public hearing about it. And, and so even if they can work this out, I, I would rather have both the parties here. Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna run through it quickly. I didn't prepare a presentation because I wasn't, I wasn't looking for this to be pulled. Typically, when we're over in the other building, we can pull things up, and I could have at least showed you the staff report, I can't do that here. But this is 1,108 Montrose, the photo there up top. This is an application for a rear addition. You approved an outbuilding here a couple months ago, and that one's been approved, and I think that's part of, part of the issue that they may be having. But this, this application in front of you today is for a rear addition. Staff found the addition to be appropriate. It does step 2 feet taller, but it meets the design guidelines as it does. The addition has a side gabled roof, so the taller part is all roof, it's inset 2 feet as we would require. This, due to the slope, it kind of slopes up a little bit from the street. I don't think you will even see that side raid, side ridge that's going to be taller from the road. So we found it to be appropriate. Our only concern was they were proposing siding on the chimney, which we don't allow. So staff found that with approval of the final chimney material and approval of all doors and windows, we found the design met the appropriate design guidelines and were supportive. I know applicant is here, I don't know if, if you want to speak at all, William, and...
Come on through. You waited this long.
Yep, I just got here. So this was kind of a good experience. We did, oh, William Smallman, lived at 1503 Clayton, just a few blocks away. This was a great experience on the process of going through it. We did a few different renditions, made some edits. Jenny was helpful the whole way. It's nice to be able to build a smaller house every now and then in historic, and it's pretty rare these days, so it feels good to do that every now and then. It's rare to have a, an owner that wants to. And I think right now, it sounds like we're dealing not with an issue of design or really anything in historic's purview, it's more just alley access. The alley's been closed on the other end for a while due to a larger project on 12th, where the old funeral home used to be. And so we just need to work together to make sure we're giving him access because his only way out is past ours, so just, it's more coordination of deliveries and keeping workers from blocking the alley, more so than anything with, you know, historic zoning.
Okay.
And I'm happy to work with him, that's what we were just starting to talk about right before this, we popped up on the agenda here.
Thank you, Mr. Smallman.
Yeah, no problem.
Appreciate you being here. Okay, open public hearing. It's okay.
You waited a long time?
You've been generous to wait your time.
I'm Kent Burns, and I live in another part of town, but my wife and her siblings have a trust called Oak Trust that owns the four houses, which you all approved next door, that they, they're built. And the development on the corner of 12th and the alley has, they've closed that alley for, for 12 months, and Metro just told us this week that the, the construction company has abandoned, have left the site.
Oh, my.
I don't know why, but, so they pulled off, so now we've got it, and it's, they haven't finished all the walls where they cut the big hole in the ground, they have not secured the soil, and, and so it's eroding around, and, which I think is a hazard. But, you know, our thought is, we have nine parking spaces that can only exit by 1,108 Montrose. And so if he, if they're doing construction on their site, how are our nine people gonna be able to leave the site?
Got it.
And it sounds like this is out of y'all's purview.
It is, it is.
Any, do y'all have any, I mean, is there anything, is there a person in Metro or somebody that we could talk to about this issue?
We're sure you can, but we don't know that person's name.
Hub Nashville?
Yeah.
Rory McIlroy? No, not Rory McIlroy. People go talk about golf?
Yes, that's, that's a great idea, thank you, Melissa, is to talk to your council person.
Yes.
Who is Colby Sledge.
Okay.
And that way, I think you can get some voice in for, that, that's infrastructure. So it would just be that conversation, I think you can work through that.
Okay. Sorry to...
No, no, thank you.
Maybe with this connection that you've made here, that obviously you, that your residents have to be able to enter and exit their homes, so this isn't a, it's not an ask, that's a necessity for, for you, so. Again, we have no control over that, but I, councilperson, hopefully knowing the builder...
Thank you, Mr. Burn. Yeah, all right.
Also, Madam Chair, Hub Nashville, H U B dot Nashville dot gov is a great resource for any citizen to raise the issue. So it, you can access via online, hub.nashville, or call 311.
311 or Hub Nashville.
Sir, did you hear, did you hear us?
Hub Nashville.
In, in addition to contacting your councilman, you can go online to Hub Nashville. H U B, they're very responsive.
Yes, they are.
Or call 311. But I would put it at Hub Nashville, and if you can include pictures, that's even better. So.
Thank you. All right, I think we're gonna open public hearing. That was and close public hearing. And commissioners?
Madam Chair, with respect to 1,108 Montrose Avenue, I recommend approval with the staff's analysis and, and recommendations.
Sir, there's a motion, there's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes. Thank you so much.
Good work, everybody.
I think there isn't any other business, Melissa? All right, we miss Robin today. Robin, if you're listening, we miss you, and...
Yes, Robin.
Yeah, and thank you, Laura, for being here.
My pleasure.
Staff, thank you. Commissioners, thank you, and we'll see you next month, hopefully. We have, yeah, all right. Well, I'll tell you later. We're, we're, we're closing our meeting now.
Some of us.
Right, that's what I'm...
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.